Okay, good evening, welcome to the August 17, 2020, School Committee Meeting. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here. This meeting will be recorded and maybe televised live. Ms. Barry, can you lead us in the Pledge Allegiance? I'm hoping that President Boncory has his flag.
We have it.
Sure.
Oh, my goodness.
Are you ready? Okay.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Okay, the Chair anticipates going into Executive Session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, can I have a motion to enter into Executive Session?
Motion.
Second.
By Ms. Powell, second by Mr. Boncory. Patty, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope? Ms. Powell?
Okay, we'll be adjourning from this meeting. And we, actually not adjourning, we're gonna go into Executive Session, then we'll rejoin this meeting immediately thereafter. Welcome back, we've just adjourned from our Executive Session. At this time, we'll take public comment. Is there any public comment?
Patty's managing the public comments, so she's gonna go through and grab the names of people.
Yep, at this time, no one, there's no public comment. No one has their hand up.
There's a chat that just came in.
Okay, it's a question, do we know what the school hour is going to be? From Orla. Orla to me. And...
Patty may be asking people to, showing them how, if they do have a public comment, as opposed to a question, any, any questions this evening? If they put those questions to the reopening of schools' website, if you go onto our main website, you will see that there is a space for you, under the Return to School tab, for folks to add questions. We'd be happy to answer those. Folks have public comment that they would like to make, if they could either raise their hand or, in the chat, indicate that you would like to make public comment, then you'll be able to bring them in. Yep, makes sense.
So, right now,
forty participants are
there are no hands up. There are, there are no hands up for public comment at this time.
Um...
Someone just added that
Yep.
they could public comment.
I'm sorry?
Somebody has put something in chat.
Yes, the chat is questions, which Lisa just said we're gonna have those sent to the email for reopening of school.
There's one additional, Amy Servillis. While the panelists like to make a public comment, rather than my comment is a question.
Okay. Okay, so, I, she, her hand is not up, I don't know if she's gonna send another chat?
She's typing questions, maybe...
Yep, she's asking, has anything changed tonight on the hybrid model? In-person and remote, same decision as announced last week? That's a question, not a comment. There are no hands up for public comment right now.
And nothing has changed because we just began our meeting? Is there any public comment? If so, if any of the participants want to make a public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting format. Seeing none, we'll move on, we'll have a second public comment at the end of our meeting. Under New Business, can we get an update on the Return to School Model? Superintendent Howard?
Sure, thank you. So, I'd like to update you on the reopening of schools' planning. At our last meeting, the committee voted to go with the hybrid model. We've been working diligently, our Return to School Task Force, Administration, the Teachers Union, many teachers and staff members, working to make sure that our hybrid model is, is ready to go, as, as was the plan. Since the last time we met, however, there's been new information that's come our way, and I feel that it's important and critical to update the committee, as the information we're receiving has a direct impact on our opening plans. And, as you recall, the committee as a whole has the authority to change their approval of a hybrid plan, or a full remote plan, or a full in-person plan at any time. So, some of the new information that we have, that we didn't have at the prior meeting, we had sent out a family return to school survey, in which we asked our families, in the hybrid model, are you planning to return, now that we knew we had a hybrid model? Are you planning to return your student to that hybrid model? Or are you going to make the choice to have your child participate in an option, and the option was for full remote learning in an asynchronous or relatively minor live instruction model? And so, that survey went out two weeks ago. Lots of emails from parents, there was confusion, which we understood, because we didn't have all the details of the full remote plan, if, in fact, a family chose not to participate in the hybrid model. Folks really needed some clarity on that. We've been receiving upwards of 150 emails a day since we sent that survey out. We put together a reopening of schools' email address for parents to be able to submit those questions to. The, the point of doing that was to collect all of those questions in one spot, and be able to answer them as quickly as we could. What we found was, we had an overwhelming amount of emails. So, we had to ramp up our response process, and our Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Accountability, Ms. Laurie Galvin, stepped up and certainly helped answer many of those questions, as did Jen O'Connell, our PPS Director, and our principals also took the time to look at many of those questions. Looking at those questions, we figured that many of them were similar, so we developed a Frequently Asked Questions web page for our website, to try to help parents sort of guide them towards how to answer that question, do I want my child to participate in the hybrid model, which was two days of in-person and three days of remote? Or do I want my child fully at home, not participating at all in the schools' in-person plan, or the schools' remote learning plan? So, we answered as many questions as we could. We sensed frustration in parents, so we extended the deadline, so that choice of which model you were going to choose was due last, was due this Friday, and we extended that deadline until Wednesday, because we felt parents just needed more time, and needed to have their questions answered before they could make an informed decision. So, as of today, we had, we have 1,987 students that attend Winthrop Public Schools, pre-K through 12, and as of today, we had 1,064 responses. Of those 1,064 responses, 822 families chose to participate in the hybrid model. Again, two days of in-school learning, and three days of remote learning, and the remote learning is done by Winthrop Public Schools' teachers. Primarily asynchronous, or primarily not live instruction on those days, but some, some instruction and check-in. The live days, in-person days are the, are the days where the live instruction would be happening. So, 822 of our 1,064 families chose that, and 235 of our 1,064 families chose the full remote option. And again, that full remote option, that was the Florida platform, so Florida put together a platform of learning that is in line with the Massachusetts frameworks, but it is primarily taught by the program itself, so it's not Winthrop Public Schools' teachers developing the lessons and posting them for our students. Winthrop Public Schools' teachers would be monitoring that site, to make sure kids were showing up, to make sure that they were engaged in learning, to reach out to families in terms of checking in, to see if kids needed some additional support, and to remind parents that they needed to attend. That's, so, 235 is about 22% of the total number of kids that chose not to do our hybrid. The concern is that we don't know how telling these numbers are, because we're still missing over 900 responses, and we're missing them, because they're not actually due until Wednesday. So, it's sort of hard to predict where we'll land with that, so of the 235 families that chose remote learning, they're in multiple grades. So, until we get the rest of those figures, it's very difficult for us to figure how many second graders, how many third graders, until those final numbers are in. We also, through our survey, and through our reopening of schools' email address, and other emails that we've received, whether it's been one of the principals or myself, parents were giving us information that they were still not sure, they may have chosen the hybrid model, and in choosing the hybrid model, they may not be sending their students back to the in-person day. Unfortunately, that's not really an option in the hybrid model. If students were not showing up for the in-person day, and only taking advantage of the remote days, because they would talk by Winthrop Public Schools' staff, they would be missing school and actually absent, counted as being absent on those in-person days, that they did not show up to school. And we would, under child find, have to seek reasons why the students weren't attending school. So, there seemed to have been some confusion with parents on that, we asked them to go back in, and if they were planning on not attending on the in-person days, that they should choose the fully remote learning plan. So, again, having difficulty giving you any accuracy in terms of the total number of kids that will choose remote, until the, the actual timeline is over on Wednesday. But it's, the number is definitely for full remote higher than we expected. We expected about 12 to 14% of our students may choose the remote model. We certainly did not expect 22% and potentially higher. We also did a teacher return to work survey with our staff, the union did a survey, and I also sent out a survey. We need to get a sense of how many teachers would be able to come back to work. Once we knew the hybrid model was the choice of the school district, we sent that survey out. It asked teachers if they were coming back, and if they were not coming back, what was the reason? So, there are some qualifying reasons during COVID time, that, and, and other times, that teachers can take a leave from school. And we needed to get a sense of how many folks thought that that was going to happen. So, it could be a leave for a staff member's own condition, or a pre-existing condition, in which being exposed or in an environment that was risky, they would not be able to come back, and that would be with doctors, certainly doctor's certification. There's also a part of the Relief Act with COVID, there was some legislation moved forward, in which if families do not have daycare in the work environment, not specific to schools, but this is in general, that families are able to exercise their right under FMLA for 12 weeks of partially paid leave, if in fact, during COVID through December of this year, they do not have access to childcare. So, staff would have the ability, if they did not have childcare, for an example, if their children went to school in Revere, public schools, and Revere Public Schools is now fully remote, if you are a teacher in Winthrop, and your kids go to school in Revere, because that's where you live, and you don't have any childcare option, you have the right to take 12 weeks of family medical leave, and not return to work, and be partially paid during that time. So, we received those surveys back, and we had estimated initially that we were gonna get about 13 to 17% of our staff may not be able to come back. And this week, so, prior to this week, we actually hired an, an HR firm. So, the HR firm would be able to process any teacher requests or staff requests without hesitation or delay, because it was so, it's so important for us to know who we have coming back. I was processing the majority of the HR requests over the last two school years, and definitely, in a time like this, that would not have been helpful for anyone. So, this HR firm has been answering all the questions of our staff since those surveys went out, and since we've asked them. I can say that the Winthrop Public Schools' staff has been collaborative in working with us, and not hesitating, to my knowledge, to give us any information. As of today, we have 30 staff members who fit the acceptable categories for requesting leave. 25 of the 30 are teachers, who would qualify, and should they choose to take that leave of absence for, again, either an existing condition, a pre-existing condition, or the need for daycare, would be eligible to do that in the first 12 weeks of the school year, or any time during the school year that they needed to exercise the right to use those 12 weeks. So, that's, to us, that's a significant amount of teaching staff, and it's teaching staff at every level. There's also some of our paraprofessionals, who are super important to the support of our students in the classroom, that have also asked, so five of the 20, five of the 30 staff members are paraprofessionals. There is no time limit when staff can ask for a leave. They can ask for it two days before school starts, five days into it, or, as these folks have done prior to the opening of school. So, our staffing capacity is sort of a moving target right now, but what we do know is there are a significant amount of people qualified, and most likely will be exercising their right to do so. Some other staffing concerns that we have, we've added staff. We've worked with the union. We knew that in having to build in the hybrid model and returning kids to school at any capacity, we have to have a medical, this is Department of Education and CDC guidelines, a medical holding space, for anybody who presents with COVID-related symptoms during the school day or during the work day. And there's protocols in place for determining that, and how people go to that space. And in that space, that space has to be overseen by someone who can make sure folks are keeping social distancing, folks are not eating, that they are six feet away from each other, until the nurse or a nurse assigned to that room can come to that room and conduct an evaluation of that person, and then either move that person out of the school, in terms of a parent picking them up, or a staff member having to leave that area directly to the outside for further evaluation, for testing, or quarantining. And so, in trying to get staff for that, we were looking for LPNs, or healthcare-related staff, and we had it posted, and received no applications for nurses. We went to a couple of agencies, a couple of nursing agencies, which we're familiar with working, and so far, we had been able to get one RN for that position, and after two days, the agency contacted us and said the RN was no longer accepting or working for that agency. And so, we are down to zero of four nurses that we need for that particular, those particular stations in our schools. That's sort of an update on staffing. The Governor, we have been asking, the Department's, Superintendent's Association has been asking the Department of Education to help us with a rubric, or a general understanding of when to move along the continuum of returning to school. So, if we started off fully remote, when and what would be the metrics for us to move to a hybrid model? We've been asking that for consistency across all the schools in the Commonwealth. We've been told a number of times that it's coming, just like a lot of the other guidance, and we had not seen that. There was a significant uptake in COVID-positive cases in the Commonwealth over the last month, probably related to the summer, and, and people being sick of being in the house. And it seems like the Governor was not happy with that, and most recently, had made some changes in the state, in the way we do things, and even more recently, got together with the Commissioner of Education, and decided that they were now going to give school districts a sort of combined effort to help us understand if and when we were to move along the continuum, or move backwards in the continuum, to open schools, or to have to close schools, what would that look like? So, I'll share this, this is, I'll share this screen with you, so that you can see it. Jen, can you see that?
Yep.
So, this is a document that came out from the Department of Education to superintendents, to all charter school leaders, superintendents, assistant superintendents at, at public schools and collaborative schools. And it was designed to, as a metric, to help serve and guide districts as to whether or not schools should open using full person, full in-person, hybrid, or remote models of learning, and support future decision-making for school districts around the impacts of COVID-19, which could or may have to, or require schools to switch in-between educational models throughout the school year. So, each Wednesday, the Department of Public Health is going to be releasing a public report that contains critical metrics for each one of the municipalities. So, if you look at this chart, there are three colors, I'm sure people have seen this on the news, that you can be in, you can be in a red zone, like a red light, which says that your average daily cases per 100,000 people in the community is greater than eight. That's where the red light goes on, and they put a a stop to things in your community, and when it comes to education, if you look to the right, where it says the Department of Education expectation for learning during this model is that schools would be in a remote mode. If you look at the next one down, it's the yellow, which, some people think that means step on the gas. Other people understand that it means slow down. And the Department of Education says if school districts are in a community in which you are, your community is considered to be in the yellow area, that you would be in a hybrid model, or perhaps a remote learning model, but you have to make that decision depending upon your community. So, whatever the circumstances are in your community, that will help guide you to determine if you should be remote, or if you stay at the very top of yellow, and you have some extenuating circumstances, you may, with the, have the department support you in being remote, or if you're in the yellow range, and you can go back hybrid, and you believe that it is safe to do so, you are able to. And then the last one, the green and the unshaded speak for themselves, if the numbers are very low, and things are looking much better in your community, and you can still meet all the requirements of the safety and health regulations that are put in place in order to open schools, which is social distancing, which is safety protocols, the COVID medical waiting room, if all of those things can be put in place, and you have very low numbers in your community, then you can start to move between hybrid learning and full in-person learning. So, having, having that information this week, and, and as I've done every week since March, the week of March 16th, I've been communicating with Meredith Hurley about the numbers in the community, and how that relates to our student in terms of our being in school, out of school, playing sports, having any gatherings, use of our buildings, anything that you could relate to schools, and how the health metrics supports that, or, or tells us not to do certain things, those are the conversations I have with Meredith. So, most recently, just in our day-to-day conversations, I've been watching the numbers rise here in Winthrop, again, being the summer, synonymous with many other communities. And more recently, as this metric came out, having conversations about where does Winthrop sit with this metrics, and our mode of learning right now? So, Meredith, I know you're on there, if you wanna unmute, and you wanna add a little bit of how I've probably just destroyed the red light, green light game, that might be helpful.
Not at all. I think you did an excellent job, it's a great leeway. And I just wanna first say that I commend all of you. This has been really hard. No outsend these decisions, I know, I feel, I feel, I feel it on myself each and every day. And I have spent the greater part of 17 years in healthcare, sort of be tasked with morphing into public health practitioners in the last six months, and doing it so well. I think you guys have done an excellent job. And like Superintendent Howard has said, we talk on, at least usually, a daily basis about what's going on with the, the data and the metrics here in Winthrop. So, to kind of, I don't know if I, I think I can share my screen. It's not nearly as nice as Superintendent Howard's. I'm gonna try and figure this out. So, just to kind of, perhaps not. Perhaps it's over my head a bit. So, just to kind of go, I'm, I'm just gonna talk about like the red, the green, the yellow, so, with the, so, as, as we know, Winthrop has been on the yellow, and, which means that we've been on kind of this watch list of sorts. So, we, so the percent of, the, the metric that is really being driven home right now by by the DPH has been, I'm gonna try and share it, so that we can see that incident.
You scroll down to the bottom, you should see, see a bright green, share screen.
Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, this is, this is the important stuff, so, so the metric that we're really honing in on is something called the average daily incidence rate per 100,000 over the last 14 days, which is a really big word. So, right here, Winthrop is sitting at 7.6%. So, to figure out that number, what we do is we take the amount of cases over 14 days, we divide it by our population rate, we multiply it by 100,000, and then divide it. So, as you'll see here, the case counts in the last 14 days was 20, so that was the, that was the the number that factored into this. What I can tell you right now is that our case counts for the previous 14 days, so this data represents July 25th to August 8th. What DPH will be releasing on Wednesday will represent August 1st to August 15th. So, in that time period, we had 29 cases. So, that tells me that there's a high likelihood that our daily average incidence rate is gonna go above eight, and that we're gonna be in the red. And the reason why I'm not coming able to say with 100% confidence is that we know that sometimes the way that I report my numbers here in traffic in Winthrop, in the way that DPH does, has some, some discrepancies of one or two cases. Previously, through March, April, May, and into June, we were having cases, and it happened all through the state, where cases were erroneously assigned to Winthrop, and then we would kick them out of our case count, once we did our, our investigation. We knew that that was not actually a resident of Winthrop, it was somebody who had lived here, at some point in their life, never updated their license, so that, that's where there's a discrepancy. So, when we're doing these calculations, sometimes those discrepancies can make a difference, but in high likelihood, we will be going above the the eight, that eight as average daily incidence rate per 100,000 come this Wednesday. I also base our population on 18,800 people when I make my calculations, which is what UMass Amherst has us set at for our census. Also, an interesting point with this that I haven't had any cases reported in this demographic yet, but. There are college kids that are returning to college beginning this week and many of them are being asked to. Test for COVID prior to walking on campus. I have not had, but it feel, it seems like. Starting today, we're gonna start seeing more kids that are able to go and return to in-person learning. On col- on college campuses are gonna be tested, so. That could affect the amount of cases that are being reported here. I, I think as we look at these numbers and we look at the potential impacts that this is gonna have in the reopening. In order for our daily incidence rate to go above eight, our case count. Which you'll see in the column just directly left has to be twenty-one. And so that's why I'm saying it's a high likelihood that we're gonna be in the red by Wednesday. When they announce the most updated metrics, I haven't heard that. I, I have a call into DPH to clarify some of, some of my numbers against their numbers. But that's, that's the best information that I can give you today. Happy to answer any questions that you all might have as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Meredith Hurley?
I actually do.
Julie?
Yes, my question is, obviously this takes into account the new cases reported in the last fourteen days, but it doesn't take into account. The current active cases within the town, correct?
Right, so it's, it's the, the amount of cases that we had positive. Yeah, and so we currently have twenty isolated, what we isolated active cases here in town. We will see a shift down, I'm anticipating in the next few days. We had an increase in the first two weeks of August, so now a fair amount of those folks are approaching their fourteen days.
Okay, so, so these numbers, I mean, in, in, you know, it would seem that. We could teeter between yellow and red almost every other day essentially, given where we're at, we're sort of on the cusp. So every other day, we could be yellow or we could be red. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any further questions for the school?
Meredith, can you tell us the age groups?
Sure, so I can tell you, so right now in August. The, the, the primary demographic has been in the age range of thirty to fifty. So out of the thirty-two cases that we've had in August, seventeen have been between the ages of thirty and fifty. We've had two cases, four cases under the age of twenty. And then three, three in their fifties, two in their sixties and one in their seventies.
And what, what's the date range on that?
That's just for the month of August, so in July, we had a demographic that showed more strongly with those under the age of twenty. At the beginning of the month of July and then it tended to kind of even off. Spread out throughout all demographics as the month went on, kind of towards the, the last week definitely still had. Heavier weight in the age group of under, under twenty.
Just one final question, when, then in other, in other places in, that have opened earlier in the school system. Did, did they show an increase in those that are younger? Because they opened the school systems or not?
I have to say, I'm not really following the media so, so closely right now. Because, you know, I, I root myself a lot more in science and there's not a ton of, you know, I know that. There hasn't been a nationwide masking order. I'm comfortable with Massachusetts in the way that, you know, the protocols that we've put in place. I think that we have been extremely diligent. I think I would venture guess that probably in school districts or. Public sectors that have opened without mandatory masking in place, that you would see a spread more readily in, in the population of children. We've had, we've had experiences here this summer, you know, as we've opted, as we've moved into phase three and people are just moving around more, we've had. You know, recreation programs opening, we've had after-school programs opening, we've had sailing programs opening. And each, each one has been touched by a potential, a potential, either a potential exposure or confirmed cases in some capacity. And, and you know, we followed the, the, the protocols that we had in place and, and luckily we're able to manage it pretty, pretty quickly. So it's, it's, it's. As people are moving around more, which we are doing, we're no longer in the stay-at-home or a mandatory stay-at-home order. It just increases, increases likelihood of transmission unfortunately, if people are not following due diligence with masking and social distancing.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any further questions?
I do have a question, you mentioned the testing with the college students that you might see an uptick because they're doing more testing. How much does testing affect these numbers? If there's a, you know, like if there's a, a report that there was a party where there were kids testing, so now do you then see a surge across town because? A lot of, a lot more people are going in?
Yeah, so that, in that case, we look at the percent positive rate, so that. I wish that we had the ability to monitor every day as to how many. And recent, it's only been recently, I want to say in the last six weeks that they've even been reporting to the local health departments, how many people have been tested. As you'll see here on this screen, you know, we, I know that as up, up until August eighth, we had. Five thousand three hundred and fifty-six people tested, and then we can calculate the percent positive rate, so. As of last week, our percent positive rate was three point four percent here for our, for our town. So it depends on, we definitely, July, July and August, we have seen a lot bigger increase in ta- of folks that have gone to be tested. Also that, you know, as we see, you know, DPH has had their pop-up sites, people are taking more advantage of it, being able to go and be tested asymptomatic. And people are traveling now with the traveling mandates, more people are going to be tested. To, you know, to potentially avoid a fourteen-day quarantine.
Right. So it, so then it's difficult to say how much that, it's just difficult to compare from month to month. How, what is an actual surge in disease and what is just an actual surge in knowing that we have the disease?
Yeah, yes, exactly, and even, you know, currently, right now, and it could be. It could be that we just don't have the information, currently, we are not. We're not investigating multiple cluster outbreaks. We're seeing, there's not a vast connection between the cases that are being reported. Other than if they're in the same household.
Are there any further questions from the school committee?
Meredith, you need?
I don't have a question, but I want to thank Meredith for the, all the work she's done over the past four, five months. She's done an amazing job with our health department, she's concerned, she cares about Winthrop. And she's been involved in every health decision we've made in the town of Winthrop, at least I've made. And I want to thank her for giving me an hour today to explain the situation right now today, so I can make this decision tonight. Thank you, Meredith.
You've done an amazing job, we really appreciate all your service.
No problem, thank you all, this is, this is pretty important, this is important stuff. And I don't, you know, I don't think anybody in this town really envies the position that you all are in either, so. The best that we can work together, I'm all for, so I'm happy to help in any way.
Meredith, do you mind staying on for a few minutes?
Yeah, no, I'm, I.
Questions arise as we, as we begin?
And Meredith, do you mind just dropping your screen?
Oh, yes.
So just a couple of, because of course I'm never finished, but just a couple of, of key sort of points. Thank you, Meredith, for doing that, I feel like I could, I definitely can't speak as, as articulately as you do about it. But I feel like I hear your voice twenty-four-seven in my head, so it's nice to hear you talk to other people. And see how they react to the information that you're providing them with. I think it's important to understand that, that metric that I showed you in which the Department of Education and the governor. Are sharing plans in terms of red, yellow and green and what that means for schools. It's super important to understand that the department is not asking us to rely on one element of data, they're asking. Us to look at multiple consecutive weeks of COVID nineteen reports. And look at the trends in order to inform changes, I think it's extremely risky to bounce back and forth. And to do things quickly, they like us, they're asking us to look at other things such as monitoring the positive. Testing results and looking at those metrics in consultation with the Board of Health. Some other items that we do look at in our planning are relative to our own staffing. So right now, of the three hundred and twenty staff members that we have working. Or somewhere close to within the Winthrop Public Schools. Approximately a hundred of those folks or a little bit more don't live in this town. So we have a fair amount of people that do live in the town, but we are welcoming forty-eight different communities. Into our community of Winthrop, to work within the Winthrop Public Schools. Many, not many, a handful of those people come from the surrounding communities, so right now. The folks that are around the edge of us, as I said before, Everett, Lynn, Rivera and Chelsea. Are red communities and we do have staff members who are living in those communities, so I do think that also is an important point to make. Couple of other things that I wanted to add. In terms of, of providing this information to the school committee tonight, I do think it's a critical point. In time in, in decision-making, I don't think that waiting until the last minute. To make a decision or any further than, if not tonight, very shortly thereafter would be beneficial. To our families and I'm saying that because I'm hearing from hundreds of families. In terms of the anxiety that they're having and the stress that it's putting on families not to know. They, right now, they know we're going back hybrid, but they don't know their student schedules yet because we've just finished those. They don't know who their kids' teachers are because we can't give them that answer yet. They don't know the details of the full remote program in a manner that parents like to know. So it's very difficult for our families to be setting up what we typically are already. Well-positioned to be able to share with them right now in terms of their kids going to school. Which means that many of our families are struggling with their own work schedules and being able to get back to work, so. Tonight's information is giving you the most up-to-date, this is a moving target, every day I get up, there's different information in front of me. And my job is to make sure that this committee has that information in order to make an informed decision. If the model does change to a full remote model, I think it's important for the school committee to understand. That all those families who have chosen a full remote model already. Because we are, you know, currently an approved hybrid model. If we go to a full remote model, the need for that outside agency to run that remote learning platform will not be necessary. If we are in full remote, it will be Winthrop Public Schools teachers. Who will be, for lack of better terms, actually virtually teaching our students in a very similar schedule. Of that if they were in school full-time Monday through Friday. It will be quite different than the remote learning that was in the spring when we were handed a new career of teaching. Remotely teaching teachers how to remotely teach kids how to remotely learn. We've learned a lot from that experience, we've received a lot of feedback from our families, which was welcomed and supportive. And certainly critical in, in many of the areas, which, you know, the, the critical piece of it was helpful in teaching us what we. Needed to do to, to improve that type of learning experience. So it will be a much more synchronous, which means live teaching model. Than a typical hybrid model, because if the teachers do not have students directly in front of them. They will be able to be live with all of their students, even though their students will be in a remote learning atmosphere. Teachers at this point in time are expected to deliver that instruction from the school district in their classrooms, which is their learning space. So I think that's in your decision-making, some of those items are, are things that are important to know as you make this decision. And I believe that is all I have, but I'm happy to answer questions if I can.
Mr. President?
Yes, just a question, if we do go to the full remote, which I may be making a motion to do in a few minutes. What will happen with the special education children? And the L students, are they gonna be remotely taught or will they still be brought in?
So as it's, that's something that we'd have to have a deeper discussion as of right now. If we were full remote under the conditions of being in the red. I believe that our students will still be remote as well. Our goal is to bring as, as many students in the high-needs category in front of staff that we can. Certainly, we would be bringing that to the teachers' union if the entire school is in remote learning. Having conversations with the teachers' union about that high-needs group and whether or not we can bring them. Into buildings if it is, if it is safe to do so in the red category. As, you know, as reported by the governor and the commissioner, expect you to be fully remote. But having individual conversations with our families as we move across that metric, I think is critical for us to have. So as of right now, if we're in the red category, they would remain remote, again, much different remote than the spring. With more flexibility in terms of how we're delivering that service to our students.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, if we were to go remote, full remote, and then at some point go to hybrid. Would parents still have a choice between going for more and hybrid or would we be locking them into whatever we do?
So I'm gonna have Laurie Gallivan, who's our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And has spent a tremendous amount of time working with the Florida Learning System. Multiple questions, I'm gonna have her jump on that because she'll give you the best answer.
Hi, everybody. So. So our plan right now is to continue with our hybrid planning, even if we were to go remote. Make sure that we're training staff once we have true numbers and make sure that we know from parents. Still, how many would continue to want their children to be fully remote? When, when, and if we do make that shift to the hybrid model. Then we're able to, to better plan and identify, and that's one of the big questions that's come up with parents a lot is. We do want Winthrop Public School teachers to, you know, to have some. More connection and more input and more live interaction with the students that are remote. We just can't promise that right now until we have these hard numbers. If we know that we have thirty kids in one particular grade that are not returning, that they're gonna stay remote when we move to hybrid. We know we have the staffing to have someone. Be a part of that remote learning in a much more actionable way. We just don't know that and so we don't want to promise something that we can't deliver. And that's why, you know, we've made the point to say that it's primarily asynchronous right now. With the exception of we'll still be doing attendance, there will be someone assigned to check in, to get feedback and try to answer questions. We just can't guarantee the amount of live teaching until we have our true numbers. And we know how many actual teachers we need in front of the students that are physically with us.
Okay, and a follow-up question on that, with the Florida program, do the students have any interaction with each other or with other students? Or is it only learning from the teacher?
So that, that again is part of the goal, so. Our move this year is to go to everyone using either Google Classroom or at the high school level, some are using Schoolagene. So our goal would be, once we know our numbers, excuse me. For example, let's say we have twenty-eight kids in fourth grade. For example, let's say we have 28 kids in fourth grade and we're able to assign a teacher to that group. They would create a Google Classroom with those students. They'd check in every morning, make sure, take attendance, get the kids situated, kind of started on their plan. They'd still be given a schedule that they would follow, much like the kids that are on our hybrid remote. Where, but they'd be logging into the Florida platform to do those lessons during those times versus logging into something that their fourth-grade teacher from Winter might have posted in their own Google Classroom. Does that make sense?
They're not interacting with each other.
No, but the goal would be if we have that teacher, then that could be arranged throughout the week for more check-ins, more live opportunities. We just, again, can't promise that until we have true numbers and can really establish how many staff we have to be able to assign them differently. We might, if it's a small number, be able to assign a staff member K and 1 kids if the number's smaller, 2 and 3, you know, like. It's really important that we have those true numbers to guide how we can set this up, along with having true numbers about a lot of our staff who may or may not be able to return because of health reasons or something along those lines, but it's still clear to teach remotely.
Thank you. This is by far the most... My feelings are this, if we're in the yellow, we're hybrid. If we're red, we go remote. I would like to have a virtual town hall from parents and hear some feedback. At this time, I'd like to table this issue and have an emergency meeting after a virtual town hall. And once we have further guidance, seeing where, from Meredith earlier, where we are in terms of yellow or red. So that's a motion to table the subject.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Does anyone wish to be heard? Superintendent Howard?
So just a question on our comment related to the parent town hall. I'm just going to repeat myself to say that we've had a survey. We've had surveys out to parents. We have had questionnaire out to parents. We have fielded hundreds of emails from parents. We have written frequently asked questions and responded to parents' emails and built those frequently asked questions based on those emails. We have principal town halls that are going to be set up with parents next week, depending upon what the model is. And those are going to be throughout the week at each individual school building, run by principals to give parents clarity on exactly what is going to happen in each model. I think parents have had a significant amount of time and have been quite aggressive in expressing themselves. And we have reported that out to folks. I think dragging our feet on making a decision when we have the metrics in front of us and you have a superintendent telling you that there is a concern related to the amount of staffing that I will be able to put in front of kids is kicking the can down the road to further cause anxiety with our parents. The longer we drag this out and the less we make a formal decision and land the plane. These parents are waiting for an answer from us and expecting us to make an answer and move forward and give them the opportunity to plan to get themselves back to work, to put assistants in their home to take care of the student learning if they need to. There is no good decision here. But what I can tell you is whatever parents decide to do with their students, after that final decision is made, will be the best decision for every single one of those children whose parents have some information to go on and a decision to make for their own children. I think dragging this out any further is only causing more anxiety and concern and decreasing the trust that the public school has built with our parents.
I agree.
Though that sounds aggressive, I'm going to tell you, I've been at this since March 16th, and I'm tired, and my staff is tired, and they're overworked, and we're worried about our kids. We want our kids in school. We want them in the best environment. Our teachers' union, to be crystal clear, is not fighting us at all about returning to school. They want their students in front of them. I want the students in front of me and my staff in front of me. What I don't want to do is wait till the last minute so that kids are left home alone, so that parents are, because parents are unable to plan in a manner that takes care of their students. I implore you to make a decision, and I don't oftentimes get on the platform.
You are doing a great job. I have full faith in you. But we're at yellow right now, and I support hybrid. If we go to red, I don't think we should be in school. I mean...
I know. Then you've just heard from both the superintendent and from the Health Commissioner that with the six new people by Wednesday, we're in the red. We need to go remote. We need to do it tonight so people can prepare.
Chairman, through you.
I withdraw my motion. And Lisa, is that your recommendation?
That is my recommendation.
Okay, fair enough. My motion's withdrawn.
Second withdrawn.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Howard, from what I'm understanding, you're dealing with staffing shortages as a result of leaves that are legitimate, which also includes not having enough nurses to staff your isolation rooms while you await transportation. And we also have a concern after hearing from Meredith Hurley with the rise in numbers to red and the likelihood as a result of that that we may get more leave of absences and Family Leave Act requests that are valid as a result. Is that what you've reported to us this evening?
That's correct.
And with that, your recommendation is... That was a question.
Sorry. I'm taking it down a notch. So with that, my recommendation to this committee, based on the information that I provided with you tonight, supported by the information from the town nurse, I would recommend that we open school in a fully-remote model with a full intention of revisiting it with a matrix of time with the intent to be in-person as fast as we can with as many students as we can when it is safe to do so.
So first...
Well, Chairman.
Hi.
Make your motion, Mr. Boncori.
Second.
I would make a motion that we open school in a remote condition and that we do not even consider changing that condition until we get a count that is below 6. And once we get a count below 6, we should revisit the situation.
Second.
With that motion, I just would ask that perhaps we put a date certain on that that we review? Because I just don't want to go back and forth where it's red one day, one week, and then the next we're taking ourselves out of the mix. I think we...
And it's going to be.
Exactly. So I think that we need a date certain where we can review this as we were going to do with the hybrid, you know, to go live. So I think if we could just set that same date, if that's okay with you, Mr. Boncori.
Yes, definitely.
So that that date in November will be the date to look and see if we can move forward with either live or the hybrid. Would you amend your motion to...
Yes. I would amend my motion to say that we would revisit this on the same date in November as we were revisiting the hybrid situation.
And can I have a second on that amendment? This will, is that a second?
No, I have a question, so I'll wait.
Is there a second on having a date certain for that review, using the same date as the prior? Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. Lisa, what would be a good date? Would it be better in January that we do this? I mean, it seems like we're...
January?
The whole school?
Half a year of remote learning?
I'm asking the question.
So I can answer the question. So again, you know, as guided by the Department of Education, which has sometimes been helpful on... I think we have to have metrics in place that allow us to look at multiple sources of data over a period of time. I think the November date, November 13th, was the original date that we had set. I would anticipate coming into that timeframe with data in my hands or in our hands around the metrics in the community in terms of the spread, as we did tonight with Meredith. More information in terms of our staff that would, you know, certainly require us to get information out to our staff saying if we were going to return to school right after November 13th, how many people are going to be coming back. We'd need to know that ahead of time, and I think we can do that. I think waiting till January halfway, halfway point is certainly, you know, reasonable, but I think we can do it sooner. Because again, the goal is to get our kids back into learning as soon as possible. One of the pieces of information that we'll be able to provide parents with at, you know, that time in November is if, in fact, parents are going to opt not to come back when we go back into hybrid. I don't anticipate we'll go from remote to full-in-person learning. Not for all of our kids, but I do anticipate the step up to hybrid. We'll be able to let our parents know in a timely fashion what that would look like. So the Florida Learning System goes by semester and to work with the parents and the Florida system on how to get some of our kids that definitely cannot come back to learning. But that option would still be on the table. Parents will not be forced to send their kids back to a hybrid learning situation in November. But I think November is 13th is a reasonable time to reevaluate.
Okay, just, I just needed to understand. Thank you.
Ms. Gallivan?
Yeah, I just wanted to add too, you know, we want to really be able to explore what we can do with our remote options fully and trying different things that, you know, like Superintendent Howard said. For all our conversations with the union, they really want to be, you know, involved and engaged with their students on a regular basis. So we'd like to try more opportunities through our full-remote process to see if there isn't a way for us to be able to keep doing it into the hybrid. We just don't know until we have the opportunity to try some of these things because we've never done them before. So maybe we can figure out a way to do that and keep the kids involved with the Winter Public Schools and their teachers without having to invest in an outside program. We don't know yet, but we want to try it, you know? So this will give us the opportunity as well to see how much we can do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Powell.
To the chair, Ms. Howard, can you elaborate just a little bit more on what this virtual model looks like? Again, the teachers are in, teachers would be in school and kids would be live with their teachers?
So the expectation is that all of our teachers would return to their working environment on the 31st, just like they were returning to the working environment if we were in a hybrid model. And they would be conducting education and teaching students through the learning platform that we have, so using Zoom, the Zoom model. We have invested in Zoom K to 12, a better system than the Zoom model that was being used during the spring. It allows for better connectivity, allows for breakout sessions, breakout classrooms, for the teachers to be able to draw on the screen during a Zoom meeting. And that if you were, an example, in the third-grade classroom, the call genners is very, in the morning, as if you were following a regular school schedule, the teacher would be there. You would be in a Zoom classroom. The teacher would be doing morning meeting or whatever, you know, one does first thing in the morning, taking attendance, and then move through the day in terms of lesson planning. At times, we don't want kids sitting in front of screens all day long. Research shows that that doesn't, is not effective, doesn't work, hurts kids' eyes. We are well aware and have learned much over the past several months. So there will be other activities that students will be doing. Certainly, when it's lunchtime, students will not be expected to be sitting and chewing in front of the screen. And at recess, we do not need parents following students around in the backyard as they do their recess activities. Teachers will not be lecturing, especially at the elementary level, for a 90-minute math lesson. Will not be 90 minutes of a student sitting in front of the computer listening to the teacher. The teacher will be instructing students to do independent work. In this model of full-remote learning, when it's the entire school district, students will be given access to the materials and supplies that they need. So if students have manipulatives in the classroom that they need to have at home, we will make arrangements with parents to be able to pick those in, as well as technology if needed in the various homes, if that makes sense.
Okay. And a follow-on question. Do we have the capacity to reach out to students who might be at risk? Maybe those who are not necessar... I know that you'll be certainly in touch with anybody who has an IUP who's on a plan, but what about those students who are on the cusp and at risk? Would it be, will we have extra capacity to be sensitive to those children and have programs or outreach for them?
Yeah, I mean, I think critical in this whole process is making sure we're reaching our families and we're reaching our kids and that where, when you're 100%, remote learning, does that, that doesn't, there's not rules to that that says you cannot have an engagement activity with a student who definitely needs it. You know, we plan to be able to, based on the metrics and our ability to do so with our staff, if there is a way we can meet with our students and have our students, especially our high-needs students, interact with a staff member, come to an outside, perhaps, activity where there's four or five students and a teacher, do some social-emotional work with some of our kids. Our school adjustment counselors are more than ready for that and want that. So we just need to take a look at where we are in a given period of time during remote learning and how can we adjust our schedules and work with our families to do as much with our students as we can. But being 100% remote allows for some flexibility, but that has to be left up to the school department to be able to do that as they can and as it's safe. If that makes sense. Laurie, I don't know if you have, or if I've said enough.
No, I mean, I think you hit on all the main points. I think, you know, a lot of the things that parents have expressed in the emails to the reopening, you know, they're wondering about other activities. So, you know, we want the kids to be engaged in after-school opportunities, right? We want to be able to have them do, participate in some type of activities like they were in the spring in the middle school. They did a lot of different programs after school and groups that got together and even trivia-type challenge things between teams. So we want to be able to give principals the opportunities to offer those kind of programs for kids as well once we get the regular program up and running and working effectively. So we, you know, would love any input and ideas for different types of things that we can do or that people have seen in other areas that we might be able to do in that respect as well as we kind of broaden the program that we can deliver. We also have, you know, Fabiola Olivera has been doing a lot of outreach with our ELD and families and trying to network through those families as well to make sure that they're understanding, you know, right now what they're at, being asked to decide and choose from, which somewhat moves right now. But at the same time, Superintendent Howard just spoke about the forums that are going to run, be set up next week at the different schools and different levels. And Fabiola will have a role in that, being a part of those and hopefully being able to tape some in a couple of different languages to be able to share with families as well.
And we do have the technology to support all of this. We were in touch with families to make sure that they all have adequate Wi-Fi and they have adequate access to computers.
Yeah, so when we did the parent survey, the most recent parent survey, I believe, and I'm going off the top of my head because I didn't expect to talk about that, but I believe 90, I believe 92% of our families had access to technology or were purchasing something over the summer. And we had a small handful, I want to say about 4% of our families who had difficulty with the internet. Over the past two months, we have purchased over 500 Chromebooks. And there's more than that. I just don't have the accurate number in front of me. So we will have the ability to lend Chromebooks out. We don't want students to have to share Chromebooks or laptops with family members or parents that are working. If parents need internet booster service, we certainly can accommodate families in need of that. So we will be sending out more information to parents. We'll have an event where parents will drive up and pick up a device as they did prior. You know, if they need to borrow one from the school district for however long they need that. And then when materials and supplies are going to be given out by grade level, principals will... will be speaking with our parents to make arrangements to do that, whether it's workbooks for certain activities, whether it's manipulatives that would have otherwise been used in school, to be able to get those to our parents is certainly critical. And we do have some time to get that done, but not a lot. So we'll be working on that. That'll all be, the communication is, is going to shift from my sort of boring letters that go out that are oftentimes long, and I understand it's going to really shift to the principals now because it's going to become more grade level specific and more child-specific. So they'll be doing a lot more of that outreach and probably more than the parents are going to want over the next few weeks.
Ms. Swol?
One more question, Lisa. About what percentage of the time will be actually live teaching versus asynchronous? Percentage of time on, you know, let's say there's five hours a day, what percentage of the time will teachers be online with kids?
I can take that, Lisa, if you want. So, I mean, primarily, we want teachers designing it the same way they would. You know, our elementary teachers stand up in front of students and do, on average, maybe a 15-minute mini lesson, and then the kids go into either, if, you know, if possible, someone else assigned in the classroom into a breakout room, be it Zoom or not. Sometimes they're working on something independently and then they come back together after five minutes and they go over what they just did. So we want them to design it the same way they normally do because we know they can't hold the attention of, you know, the younger students. At the middle school and high school, that will stretch out. There'll be a little bit more of that direct instruction and a little bit more of, you know, the, the workings behind the scenes the students will be able to do on their own. So it'll vary, but we really want them to try and structure it the way they would a normal day. You know, give the kids a few minutes to chat, you know, five minutes and then come back. You know, when they start to feel the antiness like they do in a classroom, they do it on Zoom as well. Okay, you got a few minutes to chat, you know, then I'm going to call everybody back together. So we want them to use the tools that they normally do and base it on the grade level and the expectations of the learning needs of each of those.
And it's also important to know, we have time to train our teachers on platforms that they're not comfortable with, this, you know, break, putting people into breakout rooms and Zoom. And we have 10 days at the beginning of the school year that we plan to use very effectively and, and get our teachers' needs known. We have experts now and that we didn't know we had before because we've all been home and we've had to tap into each other's resources. So a lot of that work and that training has gone on already and will get a little bit deeper as we open up the school for our teachers to come in and start doing some of that professional development that they need to provide a more rigorous and synchronous, remote plan than we did the first time around.
Yeah, and we're also hoping to, not hoping, we will be running some trainings for parents, especially for the younger students, for their login information, everything they need to know because we all know that at the, you know, the early childhood years that the parents that are doing a lot of that work upfront, making sure everybody's accounts are set up, making sure everybody can get into where they need to. So we're going to try to do some trainings for parents, some maybe live, some, and then videotape them so parents can go and watch them at their leisure. And then as we go up in years, it'll be up to, after the parent forums, principals to be able to say, this is what the parents want, or this is what they feel they need, and we can try and put those together for them at the different levels as well.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone have any further comments to make?
Um, Mr. Chairperson, I have one, one question for Lisa. Yes. Given that it seems like we're moving in, in this remote direction, which is beyond frustrating to me, this is not, I mean, Lisa, the work that you and your team has done is beyond exceptional and it should go, it should be completely recognized for everything you've put into this. And I apologize, I'm very frustrated with the whole situation and the fact that these kids-
I'm right there with you, the whole-
Like, I could cry.
Remote. I want to be, I want to be right back to having my son in class and kicking him out the door at 7:45 and making him brush his hair and his brush his teeth and getting him into a classroom in front of staff members for six hours a day because that's what he deserves, he's entitled to and what he needs. And boy, I wish I could control this virus, I'm a control freak by nature. And if anyone is frustrated, being out of control has put me in a place that has been very hard to beat. So I appreciate you, you being willingly admitting that you're frustrated because I think a lot of people try to say, well, you know, we're going to get through this. This is not fun. No one's enjoying this.
No. And so I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, the November date is about two months out, right? That would give us two months worth of data. We think that that's the earliest that it makes sense to reconsider. Can we look at a schedule of what a reopening plan might look like provided on November 13th, we look good, then what? And then by what date do we reevaluate again and then what? So that we can get to a place where maybe by the end of the year, these kids are back in school full-time, like, there's so many what-ifs, I know that, I know that, but-
It's great, that's, you know, definitely the direction that I want to be going in. And that's the direction that we've asked for from the state that they haven't given us, so we've taken it upon ourselves to do that. When we were looking at a matrix for when to shut down schools, it came out with no warning the day that Meredith and I decided to sit down and say, forget this, we're going to do it ourselves. So that matrix of how we would reopen and what that would take in terms of timelines and check-in points and agreements with the, with the school committee is something that we do need to get done sort of right away so that I can have that in the hands of the school committee for review and approval and so that you all know how to respond to our parents and so that, you know, that they know. This unpredictable kind of stuff is very difficult for people when it's coupled with a pandemic. So the unpredictability of anything, if we can put some predictability to things for our families and our kids, we need to do that. And that's definitely something that we can put together, Julia, and I will present that to the school committee, hopefully at our next meeting.
Okay. Sorry, and I, I'm sorry, I have one more question. And this is really around additional help for families, recognizing that there's children who are on IEPs or, you know, you know, special needs and the like. There's also going to be a number of kids that have never been impacted by, you know, mental health challenges or anxiety and the like that are dealing with not having, you know, not being in school for, for this long. Are there, are you guys looking at any sort of programs to help not, you know, not just the kids on the, on the, you know, in the risk factor, but also all the kids? Because my guess is that there's going to be a number of kids that are, that are impacted in a, in a big way that you wouldn't normally be concerned about.
Yeah, the trauma-informed teaching practices and, and training that we need to do with our staff is certainly critical throughout the school year and just teaching our staff what to recognize because that they've had not to recognize before at this level. And then working with our school adjustment counselors to see what types of programs we can put, whether they're virtual programs or in-person programs. We are all very much aware, we're not getting the same students back that left us in March. And that's going to be difficult for a lot of people. So our school adjustment counselors and school psychologists are definitely focused in on that. And I certainly will bring back more, the trauma-informed learning is, is professional development that we do want for our staff and plan to put that in place throughout the school year. But I will bring that back to, to school adjustment counselors just to have them have a better understanding that the committee is also looking for them.
Thank you.
Ms. Swol, and then Mr. Boncory, and then Mr. Capabianco.
I'm going to move the question.
Question, just about the number of hours, just about what would we, would we anticipate for a virtual school learning starting then and going?
That, that's an easy one. So the number of hours for teachers will not change, teachers work contractually a seven-hour day. The number of hours for students will be very similar in terms of the hours of a regular schedule for them. They may be doing, the schedule may be a little bit different and, and maybe a little bit more independent work and maybe a little bit less time for certain classes like maybe some of our specialists to make sure we fit in all of the academic work that needs to be put in. Laurie, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, so the remote, the remote schedules for the elementaries come out to be about five and a half hours a day for elementary, and it comes out to be, I think we landed somewhere around four, 5:45 for secondary. The adjustments that the commissioner made were from 9:90 to 9:35 as a requirement for secondary and from 900 to 850 for elementary. So when we did our remote schedule, we made sure that those were met.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Capabianco. Thank you. Superintendent Howard and Ms. Galvin, thank you for doing all your hard work on this and taking this serious and handling it with care. But since we're a few weeks out from the first day of school for teachers, would it make sense to amend the reevaluation date to mid-October opposed to mid-November?
So mid, mid-October would only give us where the students are starting school September 16th in their first week, full week, which we now may adjust where it's full remote learning, but let's say it's the 16th. That doesn't give very much time, though I think that, were you thinking more because the teachers started the 31st?
Yeah, I was thinking teachers started the 31st, just a thought in my head if it would make sense, you know?
So where the kids start much later, which is unusual, we don't usually have those 10 days, that's where we landed on that November 13th original date because the kids were starting so much later, which will still be the case because of the, the training that needs to be in place for our teachers because those 10 days cannot be moved, those 10 days have to be front-loaded. So even though the students are going back remote, we can't move those 10 days to the end of the school year. So in anticipation that we're going to get back to, to in-person learning as possible, we still need to train all the staff on the social distancing, the protocols, the COVID procedures, and all of those things within the first 10 days.
Ram Upray.
It's the first time this meeting has happened to me. Thank you, Mr. Matucci.
You're welcome.
I'd like to call the vote. If there's no further comment, hearing none, I'd like to move forward the vote. Ms. Hames, could you please call a roll call?
The, the question is?
The question is that we move to be, to fully remote with review on November 13th?
Thank you.
In the future, whether or not we're going to go to a different learning format, either live, hybrid, or remain in the current online program.
Thank you.
Are you ready for the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Oh, I, I'm, I'm out of frustration, I'm saying no.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Reluctantly, yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Same amount of frustration and having a child in the system. I also am voting yes, but I'm very frustrated and disappointed that it's not going to be somewhat live.
Motion passes six to one.
So if, if I may, I'm just going out there to apologize a little bit for, for my aggressiveness, but I, I do think that everybody is sharing the same frustration and I can't say it enough that this is not, this is not a, a decision that any one of us wants to make. And I think publicly, people should know, we want our students in school. We want to be able to do it when it is safe to do it and when we're capable of doing it and with the ability to keep our kids and our staff. So I, I understand, I have felt the pressure you just felt for the last few minutes is something that was, has been sitting on my shoulders for months and will now be back on my shoulders as we move forward. I believe that 50% of the people may be happy with this, the other 50% may not be, as long as people understand that every decision that we're making here in the public school is one that we can lay down at night and say, we've done what's best for kids. When that stops, I'll be done here in Winthrop and, and moving on to another career. So I appreciate you having the, sort of the guts to be able to, to stand up before our community and make this decision on behalf of kids. And we, as the winter public schools, will not let you down and we will not take our foot off the gas pedal of getting our kids back in school. If anyone sees that happening, feel free to email me. Like I said, I can handle over 100 emails a day.
Nice job, Lisa.
Thank you. You have to vote the calendar before anyone goes anywhere.
Thank you. As a maker of the motion, I, I was very hesitant to make the motion because I too want to see everybody back in school. And, and two weeks ago, I would have said, let's all go back to school immediately. What's happened to Winthrop for the past 30 days? We've had increases in our COVID. And in this 29 in a month, we've been in the papers because of it. The governor has mentioned us numerous times because of it. And every community around us is already gone remotely. And now that there's a metric that we can measure it by, it's been put out by the governor, put out by the DPH, put out by the COVID-19 Command Center, and by the DESE, we have to follow for the safety of our children, for the safety of the families that they may bring something back home to. As council president and CEO of the town, it's my responsibility to make sure that people are safe. And I want people in Winthrop to be safe. And maybe this is a wake-up call to all of you 30 to 50s that were in the majority of the COVID cases that happened in the last 29 days. You are the parent age of most of the kids that are in our schools. Be careful. Wear a mask, social distance. Let's get Winthrop down to zero a day. Not two a day, not one a day, because that'll keep us where we are. We are such a small community that one a day makes a big difference. We have to get down to zero. So please be vigilant. Please, follow the rules, wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, don't gather in groups. Use common sense, please, Winthrop. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for that statement. I think it sums up all of our frustrations. Moving on to our next item of business, I believe it's the school calendar, adopting the revised school calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, the only adjustments on this calendar have been the incorporation of the Department of Education's 10 days of professional development training in all things related to hybrid and remote or hybrid learning in districts. So those were adjusted. We moved a lot of the half-days, which used to be on Thursdays, we moved them all to Wednesdays to make the calendar. We did this during the, when we were going back hybrid so that there was no loss of, of learning. But there, there are no other changes aside from moving some of those dates around and incorporating the, the 10 days, giving the students 170 days as directed by the Department of Ed. And the teachers are still teaching their full contractual amount of days.
Mr. Chairman? Let's have a real quick question. When you have a half-day, is that considered a day?
By the Department of Education, the one day out of the 170, it is.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the adopting the revised school calendar? Hearing none. Patty, can you please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, getting back to public comment, I just, I noticed that we were getting chat messages throughout it. I, I think many of them were questions and not comments, but it is time for public comment at this time. Are there any public comments that are, that are awaiting to be heard?
Yes, I have Orla Tumi. Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, no, I just, I threw out the discussion, I had a couple of comments, but I think you've addressed them all. And, you know, I look at towns like Belmont that have a phased approach, and I think that that's probably where we've landed. So I'm really encouraged to hear that that's where we've come to, that we've recognized that it's not safe, but that we do want to get our children back and that we'll just continually assess, that we'll move forward with the data and the facts. So thank you all for that. And, and I just want to say thank you. This is very, very tough for all of us. And it's not an easy decision, but when you do the right thing by everybody to keep people safe, you can't, you can't be faulted for that. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, much appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Toomey. Any further public comment, Patty, any uh of those uh questions? Are, are there any now comments?
Um, no one, no one has their hand up.
Okay, if anyone would like to be heard, please raise your hand, otherwise we're going to go to the next portion of the meeting. Ms. Hames, anyone?
No, no one has their hand up.
Okay.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry, we have one. Um, Julie Swanson.
Ms. Swanson?
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, this is Jared Swanson, uh, Julie Swanson is my wife. Um, we were at the park today, uh, at Fort Banks, and I had a discussion with another parent about masks. The other parent was not wearing a mask and he told me that if they can social distance, that they are not required to wear masks. In light of the current situation in town, I'd like to propose that masks become mandated at the park, um, at the schools and also request that the town council be asked to require masks at the park, at all parks in town, all the time. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
No further public comment, Patty?
No.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Patty, roll call vote, as I always forget for adjournment.
Uh, yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco? Mr. Capabianco?
Charge muted, yes.
Yes. Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope? Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes, and I want to thank Meredith Hurley again for all she's done for the town and for tuning in this evening and uh weighing in on this very important decision.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you, Lisa. Good night.